All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, September sixteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Education meeting to order at this time at seven oh five. Thank you. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance, so please rise.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. James, would you please be kind enough to read the mission statement?
I would be happy to. The Orange Elementary School District recognizes that the education of each child is the shared responsibility of every member of our community. Our goal is to inspire and empower each student to achieve academic excellence, embrace social and individual responsibility, and to lead with integrity. We believe all individuals should be valued and treated with respect. Together, we will make a difference.
Thank you for that. We're going to move into public participation. Anyone out in the audience have any public participation? I will start off otherwise. As you are aware, Mr. Kraut is not sitting here tonight. The reason why is he was lucky enough to be asked to move over to the Board of Selectmen. And if you guys watched the Selectmen meeting this past Wednesday, he was voted in, and that's where he will be going forward. So Mr. Kraut had to resign from this board, and in the interim as being vice chair, I'll be running tonight's meeting, okay? And next month, we will vote on chair for this board and everything. But I'd like just to say that, Bill, I know you're out there watching. We appreciated all your time, that you volunteered to our board, the teachers, the staff, the children, and definitely us. We appreciated all your time and everything that you've put into this board. And I missed Dr. Scarpetti. Was it ten years he was on the board? Eleven? Oh, okay, okay. I'm sorry about that. So, okay, so, but yeah, no, we're gonna miss ya. But good luck next door, because you're gonna need it. So, anyone else, public participation?
I'm gonna jump in. I will echo what Jeff had just said, that Bill will definitely be missed. We've all grown as a result of his leadership, and the board has done very well, and we've achieved a lot. So, thank you, Bill.
Okay, we're good? Okay. Okay, so let's move on to the consent agenda. I'll need a motion to accept the first item under the consent agenda. The first item is the minutes from the August nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four Board of Education meeting. Do I have a motion to accept the minutes from the August nineteenth Board of Education meeting? Okay, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Wait, discussion first. I have--
Go ahead.
Sorry, I have an edit to the meeting minutes. My error, I was the one who's taking the notes as secretary of the board, is the one item that says transportation service agreement we voted on. We actually had one opposition that I neglected to note. So, the motion still would carry, because everybody else voted in favor, so I just wanted to make sure that was corrected. So, we'd be voting on the edited version.
And do you need to clarify what it was exactly?
It's the last item on the meeting minutes. It says transportation service agreement. There was a motion on it, and everyone but one person voted for the item, one was opposed.
Okay.
So, it's the, I think it's the last vote we had in that day. It was after our executive session.
Okay, do I have a--
You have to ask for a new motion that's edited. Sorry.
No, no, that's fine. That's why you're here. Thank you. So, can we have a new motion to accept the revised minutes? Betty Liz. Okay, all in favor? Okay, that passes. Let's move on to presentations. You wanna--
Sure, absolutely, Mr. Cap. So, I want to thank Mrs. Edo and Steve Gianfrido. I know some of you met Mr. Gianfrido. He's a fourth grade teacher at Peck Place School, but he's also served with Mrs. Edo as co-chair for the Education Growth and Support Model. At the last board update that I sent to you, all of you had a copy of the Educator Growth and Support Model. If you haven't had a chance to look at it, hold off for a quick second because we received feedback from the state, which we've just sent our revisions. I'll be sending that again to you as an update to all of you. But it hasn't truly impacted plan. There were some incremental or little minor things that Mrs. Edo has done. Also joining us, as you see in the audience, is Mrs. Lasto. She was also part of the PDEC Committee. Again, and she's also here in her role as the president of the Administrative Union. Mrs. Martino sends her regards. She was unable to attend this meeting this evening, but as the member, not only member, but president of OTL, she was also willing to attend but unfortunately couldn't make it. But we want to thank Mrs. Edo and Mr. Gianfrido for being here, and if whoever would like to start the presentation, please proceed.
Thank you, Dr. Scarpetti, and good evening, board members. As co-chairs, Steve and I have the pleasure of presenting you with an overview of the proposed plan. I will turn it over to Mr. Gianfrido.
All right, so these are the members of our Professional Development and Evaluation Committee, also known as PDEC. We were charged with creating our district's growth and support plan for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five school year, and the makeup of the committee is to provide a representation of different educator stakeholders. PDEC members met on October twelfth to focus on this new growth plan. We discussed a couple of trainings that the state was offering on November, October, November, and January, and then decided which members were going to attend those two-day trainings that the state provided. Then we reconvened on February twenty-first and engaged in a close read of the Connecticut Guidelines for Educator and Leader Evaluation and Support documents, the Connecticut Guidelines of two thousand and twenty-three. So, basically, what we learned in those two-day trainings and then reviewed the documents altogether on February twenty-four, twenty-first. On February twenty-eighth, we reviewed documents again, the guidelines, the CEA model, the state model, the Connecticut Common Core of Teaching, which is also known as the CCT, and that's basically rubrics for effective teaching. So, we went through all those documents and unwrapped those. We created a task for a March fifteenth Professional Development Professional Learning Session to acquaint staff to the new CCT, the new growth plan. Then on March eighth, we reviewed the gallery walk task for the March fifteenth Professional Learning Session and the teaching standards. And then on May fifteenth, after that professional development, we met to discuss our observations, the key points from the March fifteenth Gallery Walk Task. We identified the support model that the committee wished to use to develop the Orange Plan, which is a hybrid of the CEA and the state model with a focus on the CEA's model.
The Connecticut State Department of Ed provided a vision for the new plan. The focus of this vision really was on continuous learning and feedback for development and growth as educators and as a school community, with the ultimate focus on student growth and success.
So, as you can imagine, there are some shifts from the former plan to the new plan. The design elements of the Connecticut Guidelines represent several shifts from what has become common practice. When implementing the Connecticut Guidelines from the past, those shifts have to do with the standards and the criteria, the goal-setting process itself, the professional practice and student growth shifts, evaluator, observer, stakeholder, feedback and engagement, the process elements, and some dispute resolutions. So, there were some shifts in that. To be a little bit more specific, on the next slide, we have what is kind of the main differences. So, the former education evaluation system had a goal that included a student learning outcome, also known as an SLL. Well, the new growth and support plan has a goal of, that includes a professional growth goal that is aligned to standards. So, no more student learning outcome or an SLO, where the goal is going to be focused on including a professional growth plan aligned to standards. The former plan was based on a rating system that had four levels of performance. The current plan, or the new plan, the Growth and Support Model focuses on growth rather than compliance. So, big shift there. Educators and administrators had separate evaluation systems in the past, and the current plan, the educators and administrators are more aligned, so that their expectations are more aligned.
This slide kind of illustrates the timeline in which we're following for both the teacher-related service providers and the administrators. You'll notice that the timelines are very similar with slight changes in the dates where things are due. So, the goal conference meeting for teachers and related service providers is by mid-October, with administrators being November first, making sense that it follows after the work that they've done with their teachers, to then meet with the support administrator for administrators. Then by, there must be one observation that happens before the mid-year for both the administrator and the teacher. And then there is a mid-year conference that takes place by mid-February for the teachers, but by March for the administrators. And then the summative conference is to take place before June first, and then for administrators by June thirtieth. And we're gonna explain a little bit more about that. I'm sorry. So, this model, this really illustrates the idea that there's a continuous learning cycle as it relates to the plan. So, very similar to the old model, where we had a goal setting and we had mid-year conferences and we had end-of-year conferences. This model really emphasizes the need for self-reflection and self-assessment. That self-reflection and self-assessment will turn into the following year's goal for, that is mutually agreed upon by the educator and their evaluator, or the leader and their evaluator. And I use the word evaluator loosely, but the state keeps saying where it's not evaluative, yet they do use the term evaluator throughout the process. But it really is considered not evaluative, but more of a support and growth model. And so, throughout this, it's focusing on the goal that the adminis, the staff member chose to grow professionally as an individual, as it aligns to the district work, and then how those supports can be put in place throughout the year, and then moving into the following year.
So, the new plan asks districts to identify a single point of competency. So, as a result, the committee identified our minimum expectations based on the Connecticut Common Core of Teaching, also known as the CCT, and their attributes. And a single-point competency is a description of a standard of behavior or performance that is framed only as a single set of desired outcomes, rather than laid out across a rating or scale of performance, like a more traditional rubric. I highlighted a single set of desired outcomes, because as I was going through the process, I hear single-point competency, and I'm thinking one, but it's more of a set of desired outcomes that I wanted to make sure was a little bit clearer. It is stated in the guidelines that the primary reason for using this approach is that it supports a focus on an understanding of the goal and the participant's strengths and weaknesses, without the complications of having to interpret those elements into some type of a rating, a one, a two, a three, or a four. In addition, the guidelines claim that what you, what we see in practice when this shift is successful is that it becomes easier for the participants to focus the energy on the process, on the evidence, and finding the evidence, why that evidence looks the way it does, and what can be done to support improvement, rather than on a debate or a negotiation on what the rating is for an educator. The Connecticut, the CCT is a rubric, as I mentioned before, and the plan is to use the rubric as a basis for the single-point competency, and again, that set of desired outcomes.
And as far as administrators go, we don't use the CCT, but we use the National Leadership Standards as the set of standards that we are considering what standard are we gonna focus on with our goals and our plan, and as it guides us through our single-point competency. So, different set of standards, but same process.
Little bit of a challenge to see, but this is the Common Core of Teaching, which establishes a vision for teaching and learning in Connecticut Public Schools. The Orange model is aligned to these standards. So, when we kept saying about the standards or the Connecticut Common Core of Teaching, this is what we're referring to. So, that's the model that Orange is aligned to when creating and observing those target, targeted growth goals. These standards identify foundational skills and competencies that pertain to all teachers, regardless of the subject matter, field, or the age group that they teach. So, in domain one, as it might be a little bit challenging to read, that has to do, domain one has to deal with or does with classroom environment, student engagement, and commitment to learning. Domain two focuses on planning for active learning. Domain three focuses on the instruction for active learning, and domain four focuses on professional responsibilities and teacher leadership. So, each domain is broken down from there into those three indicators that you might be able to see, the one A, one B, one C, two A, two B, and two C. So, those are the standards. As shared in, earlier in the presentation, the former model included four levels of performance. For the new evaluation plan, we will look at the proficiency column as our reference point to develop that single point of competency. We are looking at the proficiency column not as a rating scale, but as ideas to develop our goals and identify a standards focus. We want to clearly delineate what it means to meet the standard in our classrooms. So, the benefit of using a single point of competency, simplicity, it promotes a clear understanding of the intended goal and the criteria necessary to meet the goal, flexibility, it allows evaluators to provide personalized feedback based on individual performances, growth mindset, the single-point rubrics encourage focusing on a specific set of competencies rather than a much more broad set, and clear expectations helps evaluators and those being evaluated better understand what is expected and reach clarity on what actions will result to work towards obtaining those goals. So, again, that's the proficiency level from the past. That's, you know, that's a minimum of what we're looking for in the classroom. But we wanted to, in order to put this all together, the growth plan, that's where we wanted to start.
And to go back to our PDEC timeline, on March fifteenth, staff engaged in some professional exercises around the proficiency standard, where they did a gallery walk, they read what the expectation was, and then they gave each other an idea of what does that look like, sound like, and feel like in their classroom, as they saw it aligned to their work in that area. So, it helped us as a PDEC committee and as leaders to understand what teachers viewed as being proficient in that, in their classroom in these areas.
So, this is the observation, observation cycle for teachers and related services. Initial certificates, so teachers that are typically our beginning teachers, they will receive two observations, a professional practice, more if needed, of course. One, or the first one includes a pre- and post-conference, and then the second one includes a post-conference each year at a minimum, and two minimum, two mini-observations each year at minimum. So, our initial certificate teachers are teachers that are holding an initial certificate from the state. Again, those are typically our beginning teachers, two observations, first one with the pre and a post, a second one with just the post, and then two minis. And I'm not sure if you could see on the right-hand side, that right far column, the minis are like a ten-minute, twenty-minute kind of walkthrough observation, where those two, I guess you could say, longer observation would be more than that, possibly, you know, thirty minutes, something like that, yeah. Teachers that hold a professional or provisional certificate will receive one observation of professional practice, which includes a post-conference every three years, and the focus is gonna be on those two mini-observations each year at a minimum. So, again, that's that ten to twenty minute. And this was, if I remember correctly, this was the state model that we went with for the observation cycle.
The observation cycle for administrators starts with administrators who are in their year one to year three in the role as an administrator. They would receive two observations of professional practice and additional observations as merited, and then two site visits, one being before the mid-year conference, which is in February, and then a visit by in spring. For administrators who have been in the position for longer than four years would have one observation of professional practice, additional observations if necessary, and two site visits, again, being mid-year and then in the spring. All of the plans center around feedback and support. So, the whole idea around the growth and support model is that high-quality feedback that supports educators and leaders is what's going to help turn into a more positive student outcome. So, the focus is on high-quality, regular feedback that supports teachers and gives the opportunity to grow and the student, and increase the student's educational experience with that support that goes on throughout the plan, which is why there are specific times throughout the year that you meet. But certainly, staff can meet with an evaluator at any time during the year to see if the support is appropriate, if they need additional support around whatever it was that their targeted goal was that aligned to the district work.
As Mrs. Edo mentioned before, the state emphasizes the importance of self-reflection in the new growth model. The focus is on staff professional growth that demonstrates overall growth of the student and the school community. Administrators and educators write a growth report at the end of each school year, and then this report includes the self-reflection that leads to the following year's goal revision and development. Educators and administrators may occasionally require more support than can be provided in the regular educator, growth, and support process. And when the specific conditions described above are met, staff may need to be placed on the initial tier of a corrective action plan. By statute, this decision must involve the Collective Bargaining Unit or Administrator Association representative before moving to a corrective support plan.
So, there are three, basically, three levels of scaffolded support. Tier one is for everyone. Tier two is a higher level of support, when a staff member requires a little extra support. And then tier three, being an intensive support model. What's important to know is, as Steve said, the collective bargaining unit for either the teacher unit or the administrative association needs to be informed all along the way, and the staff member can choose to have somebody in that process to help them as they are growing and identifying supports that they need. All three levels of support must be provided before moving to a formal corrective action plan, and that correction, corrective action plan should not last any more than thirty-five days, but can be extended in some circumstances, providing the person who is requiring the support is showing growth and is moving forward in their development. But it's a very highly structured support model, with each of these tiers leading towards support and not to be punitive in any way. And that concludes our presentation. So, we'd like to thank you for listening to our overview of the educator support and growth model. And if you have any questions, we're open to giving a stab at.
Okay, thank you for that. Does anyone have questions?
Not really a question. I want to thank you, because I know this is, this is a tremendous amount of work. Also, I'm very impressed with the state, because this is actually, I think, an improvement. The last one was very good, and it really focused more on the teachers, but this one is the, the idea that teachers are really treated much more like professionals here. And we're looking at how they can, they can improve themselves, not that they have to prove this. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna move over to the superintendent's report. Dr. Scarpetti.
Thank you, Mr. Cap. And again, just want to thank Mr. Gianfrido again, and Mrs. Edo, and Mrs. Lasto. Again, Mr. Gianfrido and Mrs. Lasto, you're more than willing to stay, but if you'd like to leave, you could leave if you like. But again, it's always hard to follow Mr. Ziman, but again, agree with what Mr. Ziman said about this growth model. And you laid it out, but it doesn't really spell out how much time everyone has contributed to this, and especially the people that were mentioned in the beginning. So, again, please extend our regards and all the hard work that everyone has done. But to all of you, good evening, board members. I hope all of you had a wonderful weekend. I know you are, as everyone else is, looking forward to this weekend even more, since the Orange County Fair begins this Friday. The County Fair is always a great way to kick off the fall season, which all the kids and families look forward to. As you're also aware, we welcomed our students back to school on Monday, August twenty-sixth. Like every year, the first week or so has brought about some adjustments. We've been working on fine-tuning things such as bus schedules, dealing with the exciting first day of school, the photo phenomenon, and coordinating with AMD bus routes to ensure our students are dropped off and picked up on time. I want to extend my heartfelt thanks to our parents for their patience as we navigated through these first few weeks of school, of the buses and dropping off the students on the first few weeks of school. At our last board meeting, we expressed our gratitude to the custodians and the facility supervisor for their tireless efforts in preparing our schools. This goes beyond just making our schools presentable. It's about ensuring the health and safety of everyone within our school community. As customary, in a moment, we will provide an update on the summer work that has taken place. And next month, we will talk about the technology report. As the school year has kicked off, so has our school events. All schools have already hosted their open houses. In addition, what also has kicked off is our cold flus and other illnesses that have popped up in our schools. We would like to remind everyone that if a student or staff member isn't feeling well, we kindly request that they stay home until they're not only feeling better, but also are fever-free for at least twenty-four hours. As we focus on the opening of the school year, I'd like to also share that as early as the end of this month, the two thousand and twenty-five, two thousand and twenty-six budget process will kick off. Budget collection documents will be sent to department heads by the end of September, marking the beginning of our journey towards planning and managing our budget for the following year. Finally, I want to thank all of you for your continued support and look forward to working together to make the school year a successful one. As Mr. Cap shared and acknowledged, Mr. Kraut, all of you have to do with that part of impacting our students and faculty and staff. But on behalf of the entire Board of Education and the community, I want to extend our deepest gratitude to Mr. Kraut for his nearly thirteen years of dedicated service as a member of the Board of Education, including his important role as board chair. His leadership has been a constant source of strength and guidance, especially in navigating the challenging moments that the district has faced together. Through difficult decisions, including those made during the unprecedented times of the pandemic, his wisdom, availability at any hour, and calm approach ensure that our schools remain focused on what mattered most, our students. His steadfast support for the faculty and staff, combined with his unwavering commitment to the well-being of and success of every child in Orange, has been remarkable. Mr. Kraut has always led with understanding, balancing the needs of the district while keeping our students at the forefront of every discussion. His willingness to serve nights, weekends, and beyond shows the true heart of his dedication. The impact of his leadership and service will be felt for years to come, and we are profoundly grateful. As he continues to serve the Orange community in his new role as Board of Selectmen, we wish him all the best and congratulate him on his next chapter. Mr. Kraut, if you are watching, I know you gave us an Irish goodbye, but thank you for your invaluable contributions and for always leaning with integrity and compassion. Greatly appreciated. And again, this also extends to all of you. Again, thank you for your service and continued service. And that ends my report.
Thank you for that. Any questions, anyone? No? Okay, let's move over to Mr. Gray.
Good evening, everyone. I'll begin with a summary of grant funding as of the end of August. Our first grant is the ARPA Online Abuse Prevention Grant. This is a grant that I had mentioned was put on hold-- This is a grant that I had mentioned was put on hold by the state. They had funded us $30,000, but they have said that the funding is not quite available right now, so they will be getting back to us hopefully by mid-October to let us know when that funding will open up again. The ARPA Right to Read Grant is a $79,000 grant. That was for last year and this year. Again, this is for the K-3 scientifically-based, evidence-based literacy teaching and learning. That was $79,000. We are now down to $58,000 in that grant. ARPA Summer Mental Health Supports Grant is a $50,000 grant. In year one, it's $50,000. Year two is $50,000. And in year three, it's $35,000. This is for the delivery of mental health services to summer program students. And we have spent half of that grant thus far this year, so we're down to about $22,000. The Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security School Security Grant, which is a $61,446 grant, has not been spent down yet. I will update you actually in the facilities update this evening on that grant. The Connecticut High Doses Tutoring Grant, which is a grant targeted toward our grade six students with high doses math tutoring, was a $156,000 grant. To date, we have spent $93,000 of that with $62,000 remaining. Primary Mental Health Grant, which is for our K-3 early detection intervention programs, $20,000 grant. We have not begun spending that for this year currently, yet. We have an ARPA School Mental Health Specialist Grant. We are in year two of that grant. If you remember, this was to hire a social worker for the district, and that is for the salary of the person. This is a $92,000 grant. Year three would be 70% of that, and in year four, it would go into the operating budget. And then finally, the IDEA Part B Extended Supports for Paraeducators Grant, which is a $5,000 grant for professional learning for the paraeducators. We have spent about half of that as well, and we have $2,178 remaining in that grant. For Food Services, as a reminder, the paid lunch price has been set to $3.40 for the 24-25 school year. Parents should be sure to visit their child's RedTrak account frequently to ensure that there are enough funds for students to purchase lunch if they so choose. Also, any family that believes they may qualify for free or reduced lunch are reminded and encouraged to submit an application. Families can find the updated free and reduced lunch applications and other relevant materials at the website, oess.org, and they can go to the Food Services tab to find those documents. As Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, the budgeting process for 25-26 begins again at the end of September with the collection of departmental budgets. Final budget drafts will be due back from budget holders at the end of October and will be in the thick of the budget process. And finally, the Audit and Educational Financial Systems Reporting. The auditors are well into their work for the 23-24 audit. They'll complete an independent accountant's review process utilizing the agreed-upon procedures of certain expenditure data before December 31st as per statute. And the EFS, or Educational Financial Systems, filing with the Connecticut State Department of Education for the year of 23-24, was certified by Dr. Scarpetti in the middle of August and sent to the state far ahead of the statutory deadline of September 3rd. And that concludes the finance and business portion of my report.
Any questions? No? Okay, let's go to part two.
All right. You may need to press... Nope, there we go. All right. So this is the annual facilities update. So I'll review a little bit about what happened over the summer and then get into what we've been doing since and prior. First, I'd like to just start off with our facility staff. Again, as Dr. Scarpetti mentioned, really want to thank them for all of the work they do during the summer, but also for what they do all throughout the year, keeping our buildings clean, safe for students, families, visitors, staff. They do a great job. You'll notice each school has two custodians. One custodian is a day custodian, that is 7 to 3 p.m., and another custodian is our evening custodian, and they are 1 to 9 p.m. We also have a part-time utility custodian and a supervisor of maintenance and custodians. So special thanks to all of our facility staff. We have four overarching goals for the facilities department. The first, obviously, is to maintain a safe, clean environment in each of our schools. The second is to use our resources effectively and efficiently. We want to make sure that we're maximizing all of our resources and not wasting any. Follow an effective preventive maintenance plan. I'll get into that a little bit further. You may have all seen that also in the long-range plan. That is a living document. And again, that's based on the preventive maintenance and trying to prolong the life of the mechanicals in our buildings and the buildings themselves. And then, of course, developing the annual capital plan needs, which actually begins with our Buildings and Grounds Subcommittee. We have to prioritize all of the work that comes into the facilities department to make sure that we're hitting everything in an appropriate manner of time. So first and foremost, we would target emergencies. So these are any instances where it might have an impact on the school day. It could mean a closure of school. It could mean a delayed opening. It could mean an early dismissal. And it's not just for inclement weather. There could be a power issue. There could, I don't even want to say it, but possibly a water issue or something of that effect that we would need to address right away. Right on the heels of an emergency would be something that impacts safety. So a risk of injury in the building, that needs to be addressed right away as well. Again, preventive maintenance. So this is something you would do with your vehicle or your home. You take your vehicle in for regular tune-ups, oil changes, because you're trying to prolong the life of your vehicle. We do the same here in the buildings. As much as we can, we try to get to each of the mechanicals in all of the buildings, up on our rooftops, in our basements, crawl spaces, make sure that we are adding grease where we need to, changing belts, filters, and whatnot. Reactive maintenance is what we hope we don't have to do, but unfortunately, in aging buildings, there's quite a bit of that, and that is when our equipment is not functioning properly and it needs to be addressed. And then finally, event support. So that's setting up, breaking down furniture for PTA, PTO events, school concerts, school programs such as plays. Preparing for the opening of school, our summer cleaning protocols remain the same for the past several years. All of our custodians team up together. They go one building at a time, and they literally start at our ceilings with our lights and our vents. They clean all of that. They dust all of the tiles. They work their ways down the walls, the cabinets, the sinks, the countertops, and they end with the floors, whether it's LVT, hardwood floor, tile in the hallways. They clean it soup to nuts. And this is not just in the classrooms. This is every room in the building, kitchens, cafeterias, closets, storage rooms. They clean all of them. And then during the school year, we continue to do our regular sanitization of all parts of the building, but especially those high-touch areas, doorknobs, main office areas, countertops in the main offices as well. As Dr. Scarpetti said, when you start getting into the flu season, or especially the norovirus season, we really want to make sure we're keeping up with that. Just some photos of what classrooms look like when we come back to school. Nice shiny floors. Custodians do a really good job of actually maintaining those throughout the year as well. Also, a major part of preparing for the opening of school is with our heating, ventilation, and air conditioning systems. We are continuing with the process that came out during COVID from the Adapt Achieve and Advance Document. And really, what that says is you want your building protocol to be set at occupancy two hours prior to anyone coming into the building, and then two hours after the last person leaves the building. So essentially, our building occupancy is 5:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m., that our HVAC equipment is running, circulating fresh air from outside, and managing the temperature. We also are continuing with our regular maintenance schedule of cleaning our HVAC equipment and changing our filters as well. And this page just gives you an idea of some of the equipment in our district. So the lower left-hand corner is what you would call an air handling unit. Those are found in our mechanical closets. You can actually hear the one here running in the closet over here. The univentilator in the middle is what's in each of our classrooms that provides the fresh air and the heating component. At Peck Place, they actually have air conditioning in their univentilators as well. And then the last one is, I think, self-explanatory rooftop unit, and that's where you would find it up on the roof. We did have a rooftop unit over at Peck Place School that met its end of life, so it stopped working. And we were lucky enough to get support, as usual, from the Board of Finance to purchase a new one. But instead of just purchasing a gas unit, because all of our units run on gas and our furnaces run on gas, we went with a heat pump unit, which it runs on electricity, but it's much more efficient, much more energy-efficient, it's better humidity control and temperature control, and we got a sizable refund from UI for doing this. And the temperature control, it creates a more even temperature across all the rooms that it services. Some projects that were completed through capital funding, again, thank you to the Capital Planning Committee at the town and the Board of Finance for funding these. The first is hands-free items, devices in our school restrooms. On the left-hand picture, that's what the device looks like when it comes out of the box. And on the left, or on the right, is what it looks like when it's installed. And if you can imagine where that item is on the handle there, there's usually just that little handle you may remember from your days in school, or if you've been in a laboratory recently that has that. This serves two purposes. One, obviously, it's much more hygienic because you're not having to touch that. The problem is, most people weren't flushing that with their hand, they were using their foot. And that creates a lot of force on that lever. We are seeing that we are having to repair more and more of those. It's becoming costly. This, you don't even have to touch it. You walk away from it, flushes on its own. Custodians don't have to go through the entire building in the morning flushing all the toilets that didn't get flushed the day before. So it serves many purposes, and it only takes about 10 to 15 minutes to install each one. So we're still in the process of installing them because there are quite a few of them. Another item funded through the Town Capital Plan was furniture over at Racebrook. And at the start, we had decided, we had thought we were going to go with desks and chairs for students. Going through and getting input from staff and from the building principal, the desks are in pretty good condition, but what they really needed was storage. So we ended up getting storage units for the classrooms and seating. So here, you'll see some seating. You'll see some of the storage options. And in the following pictures, you'll see some of that as well. They had various options they could choose from, and teachers chose what they thought was what they needed in their classrooms. And having gone through the classrooms recently, they're much neater, more organized, not that they weren't organized before, but now they have a home instead of being on countertops or shelves. We did some cleanup at the back of Turkey Hill School. Those of you who've been on the board for a little while may remember, at the back of Turkey Hill School, our furnaces used to be on oil, and there was a huge oil tank there. It was referred to as a convault. It was a big concrete square block, basically, within those bollards. That was removed, and the bollards remained for a couple of years, and we weren't able to get the dumpster back towards the loading dock, which presented an issue for custodians because when they come out with the garbage, in the other schools, they're able to just drop it right off the dock. It saves their back from getting injured. The custodians here were having to walk down the steps into the parking lot and throw it up and over. So we removed all the bollards. You can see it's much cleaner now. We put a Jersey barrier in front of the electrical box, and now we can push the dumpster back. It makes a much nicer, cleaner area back there, safer for everyone. Another grant that we had that I mentioned earlier, the School Security Competitive Grant Program. A couple of times, I had applied for this grant, but it's a very competitive grant. The third time was a charm. We received the grant. Now, I mentioned to you that the grant was $64,000. The overall cost of upgrading security infrastructure was actually $200,000. The security grants are matching grant, so the town has to provide matching funds, and then you get refunded. And it's based on the wealth index in Connecticut. And where Orange sits in that index, we get reimbursed about just over 30% of the entire cost. So that's where that $64,000 comes in. But with this grant, through this money, we were able to upgrade all of our exterior security cameras to 4K cameras, which really enhances the clarity of the pictures and the pixelation and the zoom. We're able to really zoom in on things, but really see it clearly. Whereas when we zoomed before, there was so much pixelation, it's really hard to see what you were looking at. But this grant also afforded us the opportunity to get a new server that houses all of these cameras and then switches that go along with that and some of the software updates that go with it. And I will let you know also that all the views of the cameras that we have, the police department also has in their dispatch center. These are just some of the examples of the various cameras that we have now on the buildings. Some of them look similar to what we used to have, but you'll see on the upper left-hand and right in the middle, those are called bullet cameras. Those have really capable zoom on them. You all are aware also that we are in the middle of conducting a facilities condition assessment, better known as a building study. Silver Petroselli Architecture Firm is doing this for us. To date, they've conducted the evaluations of our mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems, and they've reviewed the building's deferred maintenance items and accessibility. They're in the process right now of reviewing the roofing systems at the schools. They need to do MLT in Turkey Hill this week. They're also going to be performing a code analysis, which is based on today's codes. Because if, as part of this study, if there's anything that we do need to replace, the codes may have changed since what we put in 40 years ago. So that's why they need to do the code compliance study. They hope to have a draft report to us by the middle of October, and then a final report would follow a few weeks later, probably late October, early November. I want to highlight our ongoing collaboration with our town partners because we really do interact quite a bit with all of our town partners, especially the police department. That's almost on a daily basis through our SROs being in the buildings, being visible. They provide the SOAR program to our kindergarten and sixth graders. They provide security alarm support at 2:00 in the morning. I know all of the evening officers, the night shift officers, so that's fun. Emergency and non-emergency responses, safety reviews of buildings. We have crisis, school crisis team meetings. They attend all of those, and they help us with reviewing our building safety protocols. So we really do interact with them quite a lot. The Department of Public Works, they assist us with snow removal in the winter, salting our application of salt in the parking lots. They assist with repairs and improvements around the schools when possible. And from time to time during storms, we have some large limbs or some small trees that fall in the schoolyards. They help us out by cleaning those up. The Fire Department and Fire Marshal's Office, the fire marshal tries to attend our fire drills as much as possible. They do our beginning-of-year inspections. We have the community outreach with the poster contest. Again, alarm response. We had a couple of alarms this summer at Turkey Hill due to a faulty CO2 monitor, and it went off a couple of times in a day, and they were there within two minutes. So they're really quick to be there and help us out. Park and Rec Department, mowing and trimming of all of our grass and fields in our schoolyards, but also maintaining the perimeters of our buildings and any overgrowth that might be there, they trim that up as well. And then the Town of Orange Emergency Management Advisory Council, Dr. Scarpetti and I participate as members of that, and we attend a monthly meeting where we discuss the emergency management plan for the entire town and how the Board of Ed fits into that. I just want to wrap up by going over again the facilities, maintenance, and goals, you know, maintaining that safe, clean environment for all of our staff, students, families, any visitors to the buildings, using our resources effectively and efficiently, establishing the effective preventive maintenance program to hopefully prolong our buildings. And then developing capital plan needs. And I put a couple of bullets here at the end just to remind you that the capital plan requests are usually due by middle of November. And that's that five-year plan of short-term capital projects for our school buildings. And that begins again at our Building and Grounds Subcommittee level. I'd like to just give a special thanks to each and every one of you. As many of you have probably quipped at one time or another, people have asked you how much you get paid for this. You don't get paid. You do put in a lot of time and effort in support of our schools and our students, so we really appreciate you. First Selectman Zioli for all of his support, the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance members for the relationship that we have working with them throughout the entire budget process. But if ever there's a need for the schools, they're always there for us. And then finally, of course, our families, our staff, and the taxpayers of Orange, Connecticut. So thank you very much. And that concludes my presentation for facilities.
Thank you, Mr. Gray.
Thank you.
Does anyone have any questions regarding the report?
I have a question.
Sure.
Mr. Gray, whose retirement job will be a tour guide, took us through the schools, and our schools are getting old. But every school was beautiful, colorful, clean, inviting. So you get a lot of credit, your team gets a lot of credit, and all our people get a lot of credit because they were beautiful. I had a principal once who, we were standing around, and it was Bridgeport, and there was a piece of paper, and he picked it up, and I thought, wow, that's really good, you know, and that's, that's what you have here. So congratulations.
Betty?
Thank you, Mr. Gray, for such a detailed report. I think our students, our school learning communities are very fortunate to have such a comprehensive plan in place that's followed up on a daily basis. So thank you and to all your staff for such a great job.
Anyone else? Can we move on? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Gray, for that. Let's move over to Dr. Russo.
Good evening, everyone. Curriculum and Instruction just has two updates for this evening. The first is that our professional learning sessions that are onsite and school-based will begin this Thursday. We'll kick off this series with the fourth and fifth grade teachers at Racebrook School. The focus is language comprehension, and specifically to support the new social studies standards and to make sure that students have the tools that they need to process the information that they are exposed to. The second update is that we are currently matching mentors to our new teachers who are involved in the Team Program or Teaching and Mentoring Program, and we hope to finish that by middle of next week. And that concludes my report for this evening, or updates.
Thank you. Do we have any questions? Betty?
Thank you, Dr. Russo. Just curious, how many new teachers do we have who will be part of the Team Program?
We have seven, but a total of 13, because some that started last year haven't finished. So it's quite a large group.
That's quite a large group, right?
Yes.
Okay, and they're spread throughout the buildings, I guess?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Hi, thank you for that report. Mrs. Ito.
Good evening again. As Mr. Gray mentioned, we continue to benefit from a grant called Primary Project. The Primary Project allows for eligible students in grades K through three a play-based way to personally connect to a caring adult. Children are considered for services based on teacher survey results and input as well as parental feedback. Last year, we had 100 children who were served by our child associates, who are overseen by our school social workers in conjunction with our school psychologists. So we are currently in the process of beginning the teacher rating scales to identify who those children are who will be receiving those services this year. As you, as you may know, I am the Title IX Coordinator for the District. Title IX is a federal law that prohibits discrimination based on sex and educational settings. It applies to all people regardless of their gender identity, gender expression, or sex. New regulations require districts to provide updated training. The three-hour training is for administrators and a one-hour training for all staff. Our special education staff, including our paraeducators, continue to engage in professional learning regarding our district advances and resources to coordinate services that support student learning. Most recently, paraeducators were invited to join in on training on the different vowel sounds. Believe it or not, there's about 20 different vowel sounds. This week, there will be training on the use of specific icons used for reading and writing instruction to facilitate conversations about a child's personal life experiences. Additionally, staff will be working alongside their general education peers regarding the district focus on writing and, as Dr. Russo just mentioned, language comprehension overall. And that concludes my report.
Thank you for that. Does anyone have any questions? No? Thank you again. Sure, go ahead.
Would it be possible to get any of Mrs. Ito's information in our, in the board update that you send us at a time?
There's times we have included it, but if there's something specific, we tie it in.
Particularly, particularly when she was referring to some of the grants? I would just like to, to see if I could.
Yeah.
Sometimes I try to write it down.
That's fine. I think those grants are included, but we'll be more than happy to look at that.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Moving over to board business. Number one of our policies, we have a policy second read, Orange Board of Education Policy 4112.5/4215.5, security check fingerprinting. Do I have a motion to accept the Orange Board of Ed Policy 4112.5/4215.5, security check fingerprinting? Motion second? Second? Any discussion? No? All in favor? Okay, motion passes on that. Second policy read is Orange Board of Ed Policy 4133/4233, travel reimbursement. Do I have a motion to accept the Orange Board of Ed Policy 4133/4233, travel reimbursement? Motion second? Any discussion? All in favor? Okay, that will pass as well. Yes? Thanks. Okay, moving over to the third one, Policy, Orange Board of Ed Policy 6112.1, opening exercises, observance ceremonies, and programs. Do I have a motion to accept the Orange Board of Ed Policy 6112.1, opening exercises, observances, ceremonies, programs? First. Yeah, right. Oh, my goodness. Ronette, second? Garpin? Okay. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor? Okay, everyone's all in favor? That motion will pass. Thank you. Okay, the following policies are first reads, which is Policy 5131.81, electronic devices, Orange Policy 5132, dress code, Orange Policy 5142, student safety, and Orange Policy 6130, organizational plan. There'll be a second read at our next board meeting and further discussion then. In between now and then, if there's any questions, we all know who we're going to reach out to, right? Right? Okay. Making sure. Moving over to standing committees. Let's go over to Finance. Ms. Riquel.
Thank you. The Finance and Operations Committee met prior to this meeting. Mr. Gray gave us a detailed report on the grants. We reviewed the financials. Everything was in order, nothing unusual for this time of year. We had the cafeteria update, and it was it.
Okay. Any questions? Discussions, anyone? No? Okay. Personnel Policy Transportation, Mrs. Hadlock.
Good evening. Our committee met on September 9th. We reviewed the current second read policies that you see this evening. I know some of them are lengthy, so please take your time to read them over, and if you have any questions, please contact me. Our committee will meet again before the next board meeting, and that's all.
Thank you. Any questions? Anyone? No? Okay, moving over to Buildings and Grounds. We did meet on Wednesday, August 28th. Mr. Gray just gave a fabulous presentation on our walkthrough of the schools. Again, we appreciated that walkthrough. The schools did look fabulous, the classrooms, everywhere, everywhere looked great. Very impressed with how everything is being maintained with the age of our buildings. And that's all I have for Buildings and Grounds. Does anyone have any questions before I move on? No? Okay. Mr. Zaiman, you're up.
Dr. Russo spoke about the professional. I'm so excited. Ruined my flow. Dr. Russo, I'm sorry. Dr. Russo spoke about the professional development calendar, and I'd just like to point out that it's not unusual for a school system's calendar to consist of simply acknowledging that professional development will be taking place on certain days. Not so in Orange. Here, our professional development and grade-level planning for the entire year is organized and targeted to support our district's efforts to focus on the cognitive processes that underlie language comprehension. I threw in some vocabulary. This is aligned with the portrait of the Boa graduate and the right-to-read legislative requirements. We also discussed the smarter balance, the smarter balance assessments, and the fact that these results are important. They serve a purpose. Their goal is not to compare dirgs, districts, or even classes. They're used as a tool to help assess instruction and to be able, in general, to see individual growth. That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Nope. All right, let's move over to our ACES report.
So ACES had an extremely long meeting last Thursday, September 12th. One of the things we reviewed was ACES presented us the governing board with their ACES District Literacy Plan. If anybody's interested, I have a copy. I also have it electronically, so happy to send it over. We also got an award for breastfeeding and chest feeding for our policy on that. So they did a great job with it, and we actually honored one of the women who was in charge of writing that policy, which was great. We had to do a full, it's our five-year plan for the early head start. We had a 2024 community assessment and the full five-year plan that went along with it, which was a lot. We had updates from our construction people for Wintergreen Inter-District Magnet School. That's had a couple of things get approved, and we are proceeding as planned. One of the things we did over the summer was, we had applied for a grant for the roof at Wintergreen and some funding for the new facade, which we're keeping our fingers crossed on. We have a new cell phone policy. They're slightly different in different schools because we have magnet schools, which are typically STEM or STEAM. And we also have special schools as well as, the cell phone policy is in schools only, whether it's special or magnet schools. We don't have a plan in our services areas. We did establish a building committee for ECA because we're looking at doing some additional construction over there. I don't know if you guys know anything really about Educational Center for the Arts, which is a partial-day high school program for nine through 12 students. There are five major areas that they focus on within the arts. They, the first building they had is actually, previously was a synagogue. Wasn't really all that conducive to the arts as a whole, so they did undergo a remodel probably, I don't know, 20, 20-plus years ago. And so we've acquired a building that was near it and adjacent to the Little Theater that's there as well, and we are, we established a committee to be able to look at what we need to really make that a full campus for the arts. And we're going to also review of whether or not that could or possibly might become a full-day program. So that's an interesting thing that we're talking about just in the works, just so you're aware of it. Everything else was fine, all of the financials were fine, schools opened on time, everything went well, and I think those are the highlights. The other, the projects at ACES at Chase is also going well, as well as the 88 Basset Road, which will be a special ed school. So we're trying to figure out, once all of those projects come to fruition, we may have too many buildings. And so there's a way of shifting some of them. Some of them we're renting. For like ECA, we had a dollar a year for 100 years, so we still have about 60 more years to go. Maybe longer, gotta look at that one closely. So anyway, ACES was busy, and it was definitely a long meeting, but it was very productive.
Wow.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any questions for Susan? Betty?
Thank you, Susan. Couple of things. First of all, are students attending the Wintergreen School yet?
Yes.
Oh, good, they are there. Okay.
Yes, students are, the schools that we have for magnet schools are at Wintergreen.
Yeah.
A lot of the things that they're currently doing is in space that the students aren't in. We're still allowing Hampton to use a small portion of it. There's some empty space there. And then there's the students' actual space. So Wintergreen is operating as, at the size school that we have, are able to use right now. It will probably grow. It's a STEAM school, so it does focus on the arts. It's a feeder to ECA as well. ACES at Chase is open and working. We're having some issues with ADA compliance at ACES at Chase because it was a private school before that, and some of those public school rules didn't follow there, so challenge there. And then the third one is ECA.
And do you have any idea of how many students from Amity attend the ECA program?
Yes, but I don't have that number out. I will get it out to you.
Magnitude? Can you give us some magnitude?
Nine, 12.
Oh, so not very many. Okay. And it's located?
It's in New Haven.
It is in New Haven, okay, because I knew when I was teaching in Region 13, they were going up to Hartford for their, maybe.
Yeah, there's, each of the RESCs, the Regional Education Service Centers. There's one in Fairfield County, there's one in Hartford area, New Haven. There's five, I think.
Yeah, so Craig has their own up there.
Craig has their own, yeah. And their campus is beautiful for their roads. So yes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else for Susan? No? Okay, the moment a lot of us have been waiting for, the adjournment of our meeting. So Ken's going to make the motion. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
Susan?
Ken goes first this time? I lost my position.
Yeah, right? I'm sure there's no discussion, so are we in favor?
All in favor.
Are we all in favor? Okay, we're all in favor. Okay, thank you. That's it.
Thank you.